...the regular city council meeting in the city of Louisiana, December the tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at Wood Stand. I ask Chief Wiesel to play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being just as are all.
Homino, please pray.
Our gracious heavenly Father, Lord, be thankful for this opportunity together gathered this evening. We ask you, Lord, to always watch over us, guide us, lead us, strengthen us, Lord. And, Lord, we ask you to be with our city and everybody that showed up here tonight. We ask you, Lord, to always forgive us, Lord, of all our failures, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
That was the last one that I got up there.
Okay.
All right, the couple of comments, of course, this is our December meeting, and it's usually a time when I try to again take time to thank you all for serving on the city council. The points is out front are yours, from me, not from the city, because I paid for them, but from me, and just that's my little talking of appreciation for you all working with me so well out here, and I appreciate you. And you sent Kathy some paycheck and a check there.
Thank you, Kathy.
Here, my name, I'll call this thing.
A couple of projects that I just went update you on, I know I beat the dark horse to death on the water and sewer project, but I feel like each month worth bringing it up to you. The water project is near completion, and one more aspect of it, and that was down for work to do it best hardware, we were changing a PRV, which is pressure reducing valve. It's underground in a pit, and specifications of the project, calls of the funding, the federal funding, there are certain specs that all the parts has to be made, so much US steel or something like that, it's some thing. And so, when they ordered the PRV, and it took forever to get it in, when it got in, the engineering firm noticed that it really didn't meet the specs because of how much it was some parts in it from some other country or something. So, they, it was no problem, other than we had to send it back and order from a different company. So, they reordered. It's probably in, but they haven't got it installed. As soon as that's installed, that project should be one hundred percent complete. I feel like I've touched base with, if not every, almost every property owner about how we left the property, how we left the street in front of the property, and as far as I know, everyone is satisfied, most everybody seems to be in better shape than it was when we did the project. If anyone is not, now is the time to let me know while the project's still open before it's closed out. Once it's closed out, it's harder to get going back to back to business. That's where we stand on that, on the sewer project. There's been no real change from the last time I updated you that the bids keep coming in over budget, about a half million dollars, four hundred and some thousand dollars, various reasons for that. And I talked to Kentucky structure authority about that issue, they said, Mayor, don't, I mean, it's just, it's common, it's the time we're living in, we're seeing it all over the state. There's so much work out there right now going on, and less contractors to do it, that contractors can pick and choose what they want to do, and bids are coming in higher across the state. So, it put us in a position to go, have to go back before the board. I don't feel like there's gonna be any problem increasing our funding that much, so whatever we increase it, half of it's free, and then the other half will be added on what we owe already at a quarter percent interest. As far as the difference in payment, although it sounds like a lot, but it won't make that much difference in payment. And she was, if it had been ten percent of the total loan, she can give you that much increase just with her signature. Unfortunately, ours with ten percent didn't hardly do it, it needed a little bit more than that. So, I have to go back to Frankfurt, go to full board, explain to them what the deal is, and she don't perceive it to be any problem, I don't perceive it to be any problem, it's just a step I'm gonna have to take, and I'll probably be in Frankfurt January the sixth to fifth or something like that doing that. So, a couple, three weeks away, I think we'll have an answer, as far as that comes. Last thing, before we get into the, oh, Christmas, we are dec, I think some people thought we forgot it, that it was Christmas. There's a couple, three reasons for that, and mostly, the only real decorations we put out is banners on the poles and snowflakes on the light poles. The only way to get them up there is with the bucket truck. Now, before I became mayor, our guys was in the bucket of a backup, putting them up, and I don't allow that, I haven't allowed it since I've been mayor, it does not make sense to put the city under that liability, workers under that. So, fortunately, Lycom, the last three years, has helped me get them put up. All I can tell you this year, Thanksgiving, it seemed to be a little bit later, and Lycom's a little bit less, believe you all know that, they're less stacked and they're new work, and when I asked Steve when he could do it, he shot me a date of Wednesday the eleventh, and I said, that's what you can do, that's what it'll have to be, so that's, that's, we'd already planned on being up nine o'clock in the morning. My wife is working with some volunteers on putting some stuff in the flower pots up through the street, we had planned on that a month ago, and just our goal was trying to get everything wrapped up and new and looking pretty for Saturday night, which is the parade that, I don't personally head up the parade, there's a committee that does that, but they've got everything lined up to have the parade the fourteenth at seven o'clock, so my goal was to have the new banners and lights up by the end. Although, don't seem like everything's rushed, I didn't forget that it was Christmas, probably got everything. Okay. I would ask that we motion to approve the minutes from the November nineteenth meeting with the special meeting, if you had a chance to look at those.
I'll make the motion.
Not a second.
Motion to second hall paper?
Aye.
In your pocket. All right, number five, approved first reading of ordinance two thousand and nineteen, your agenda says oh seven, we need to make a correction to that, it needs to be two nineteen dash zero eight, that was just an error in-house somewhere, because we feel like we've been on this horse ever since last year, and we, we actually already used that number as an ordinance, and we, so that's one correction that needs to be made on the top of the thing that she gave you, well, she gave you a new copy.
Yes, because you had a copy that you had, and I wasn't sure if it's the same thing.
And the other thing, Wendell, that I keep harping about, that I still don't understand, is this, to me, this is what we show people, this is, this is what people see with the city, this whole.
This is the one we passed, hold on, make sure we've got the same thing.
Okay, this one, this one I passed out a few minutes ago.
See, there's so many floating around, that's the problem, there's too many copies floating around.
Is it the same?
The one I passed out has blind down the side, in margin.
Well, that's not how we do things, because the city clerk passes out the ordinances that we are gonna pass, not that somebody else passes it out, am I wrong, Bud?
Well, you're wrong.
That's the whole problem, wait a minute, let me finish, that's the whole problem with this whole ordinance, because until today, I didn't understand what we were doing, because that's one of the problems, I'm sorry, it is.
I have to take some of the blame for that, because Wendell and I have been going back and forth on drafts of it, and we talked about it this morning, and I thought it's the easiest thing to do, and I suggested to Wendell that he.
Well, here's how we do things.
Wing the current draft to it, so he can get mad at being not him.
No, because here's how we do things, for a reason, and you know this, and you taught me this, when the ordinance comes in here, you approve it with Wendell, if that's what you want to do, but then it comes through my desk, and it goes to council, council has a chance to read it before they come in here. They don't get a chance to read what Wendell comes in and passes out later, and then we don't know if we have the right thing in the book that I record. Please don't do that no more.
Okay, I'll behave.
I'm sorry, that's, I've been confused about the whole thing. I was confused, you know, when we passed the other one, the two thousand and nineteen oh seven, that was just an intent to sale, and I didn't even understand that, guys, so that's why I'm explaining, you guys understood that. And then we had to do that, and then we had to do the, put the sale for advertisement in the paper, and so that probably was our cost, I didn't realize we had to do it that way, that was the reason we've got two punishments. But, the fact that you brought in that ordinance, and then it was signed here and here, that wasn't what I passed to council either, and that's what I got it submitted out the last time, so I want that stopped, I'm sorry, but it.
That's my, and that's my fault, not his.
Do you have a copy of what he passed out?
It's right here.
I really don't know, because this is what you had on my desk today, not what anybody passed out.
Is there any difference in what I passed out, right here?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, grab it.
This is what Bud has approved, because that's not what was sent to council, they didn't have time to look at that. So, it's a whole new thing, forget what I gave you while ago.
Here's the difference, and here's what, this is what I've been confused about, Wendy, Wendy.
Initiate our way.
Okay, hold on just a second, I'll explain to you. Once we advertised for that intention sale, the only bid or so-called bid we got was from AEP, which we expensed. We agreed, if you remember, the twenty-five percent on all light posts, including the post office lights, which they hadn't paid before, not reducing it by the riders like they had before, and I was satisfied with that, Bud was satisfied with that, they were satisfied with that, and ultimately, you all were satisfied with that. So, then, it needed to go into an ordinance form, I'm like, I was a little bit confused about why we had to have another ordinance after we'd had, but we're there, so. But, when Bud sent me this ordinance to present to council, my problem with it was, why is nowhere in these ordinances, it's not just here, it's what AEP does everywhere up and down there. Why is what you're paying us not in the ordinance, why was it not in there?
Well, if you'll look at section one with me, and section eight, I think we would address those concerns.
Okay.
No, no, not until today, when you said you'd add an exhibit, it didn't address it at all, right?
No, in my prior communications with Bud, I indicated that we would add the exhibit in the final version.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's what, that's what we had talked about.
Yeah, and I apologize, I take some of the blame for this, there was initial draft, and Cat, this is one of the reasons why, he sent me an ordinance in the first part of it, on section one, in accordance with Kentucky Power bid letter dated October twenty eighth, incorporated by reference, terms which are adopted, so forth, that was in the first provision he sent me. I indicated to Wendell that the, we wanted to put a clarification on that, and.
In section eight.
Oh, okay, I don't have section eight. Maybe it's one of them.
It's on the bottom of page two.
Okay, on section eight, and I told Wendell, I think it was yesterday, that we wanted more clarification on it, so he added in section eight, that bid letter, as exhibit A, were incorporated by reference, as part of the ordinance, and that is what I guess on what you handed out tonight.
Precisely.
And to.
Well, I'm back to my original question, why didn't it start, why didn't any of any of your.
Section eight has that in it anyway, has that exhibit in it.
You had it exhibit.
The one I passed, the one that I already had had that in it, I'm sorry, it doesn't matter committed passing or not, I aggravated because it didn't go across my desk properly, I'm sorry, but that was it.
It did have it, because you got the one Bud's in at this one, which is the same as he brought.
That's why I get counsel and add it when I sell.
Good. The reason is, the record consists of, in a franchise proceeding, you start out with the ordinance to advertise the franchise for bids, then the next step is you get the bid, the bid or bids are submitted, in accordance with the original franchise, which sets out the terms, okay? Then the next step is you get a report of sale from the city attorney, reporting to the city council and to the mayor, that he conducted the receipt of bids on the designated day and time, and that the one bid was received, and attached to his report of sale is that bid, so that's part of the record as well. And then the next step is to take up the first reading on ordinance, to grant the franchise pursuant to all those steps down the line. No purpose designed to leave anything out, it's just that if you do all those steps, and all those are in the record, there's no question what the terms are.
But all those records, so, once I asked for it to be put in there, is there a reason why it's an exhibit and simply put in there?
Couple, three reasons. First, if you get into trying to drop the bid letter itself in, you can drop off a word at the end of the line, then you also got the issue of, what do you do with the signature? Do you leave it with no signature on it, just a blank signature line? The alternative is to incorporate it by reference, which is standard procedure in legal documents, to incorporate one document into another legal document by incorporating it by reference, and when you do that, it says that that document is a part of the ordinance, and I think your city attorney will agree with me that that's correct.
Just because what he says is correct, doesn't explain why it wouldn't, but why it don't make sense to put it in there? I mean, you say you can make a mistake, well, you can make a mistake on any of these.
No, I understand, but we were very careful with the bid letter, you asked us for a proposed bid letter back at the outset, never been asked for one, but we submitted one. I was very careful in that to make sure that that was attributable to the bid letter that ultimately got submitted, okay? So, so that you don't get any proof reading valid about accidentally dropping off a word or a letter or a number or whatever, as far as doing it again to drop it in here, is the standard approach to adopt it by reference, and then the whole document start to finish is part of the ordinance. That one makes any doubt?
Are there any other, do y'all have any questions? I can see no reason why that we would have to have an ordinance that says a thousand things that you get from us, and zero that you give us, why is it?
But, but your.
Until today.
And the hidden fact that it even has an exhibit attached to it's kind of buried in it, too.
Until today.
It's not even.
That exhibit wasn't no part of it until it's.
It's the attachment, the attachment.
That's correct, it's consistent with my communications with Bud.
Okay, all right.
And when, when he and I talked about the first reference to section one, I mean, I think we contemplated all the element that would be attached, but what I said the first time was just the addition of section one, and he said you wanted to see it in section eight, so I seen the addition to section eight, referring with, with the fully content that we would attach the exhibit to it, but I didn't send him the whole thing, I sent him only the two sections that the changes were made to.
And all those changes were said, as exhibit A.
I'm sorry, say again.
The only thing that was changed, because before, section one said, in vague, you know, in accordance with Kentucky Power bid, bid letter dated X, Y, Z.
Yes.
So, you did reference it, but.
Yes.
I just, Mr. Rob, I'll be honest with you, when I was doing all this research, I spent hours researching what you all paid to other cities, and I was astonished that I couldn't find it either.
Well, it's a public, it's a public.
No, this is a public.
No, well, for one, for one thing, this gets submitted to PSC, it's public record.
You have to get common people that don't know alls.
And every city has a copy of it, and it's gonna be in every city's record, so I, there's no intention of hiding it.
Okay. So, you, but, Bud, if we publish this ordinance, is exhibit A gonna be published?
Yes, it has to be.
It'll have to be.
Yes.
And if a person walked into city hall and asked for this ordinance, this exhibit would always be with you.
It should be, okay.
But have we not done this step, that would not have been the case?
It would have been in your record.
Somewhere, yes.
It would have been in the file or in the file.
It would have been part of the record, that's right.
And the public would be like me, when I try to find out what y'all paid X, Y, Z, it's never on file, it's on the service commission.
Well, the bid letter, the bid letter is always on file.
But not with the ordinances. I can pull you up an ordinance for every town around, but none of them tell you what you paid.
But, but the bid letters are all there.
But, why?
I mean, at the.
Why do it that way? I don't get it, just so you didn't make a mistake?
Well.
Copy and paste don't work.
And I've never, never been asked that question until this year.
Okay. I have no problem with the agreement, because that's what we agreed to, I tried to come up with something that I felt they could agree to, and I believe we did, and they agreed to it. I have no problem with anything, other than, just like with foothills and Lycom and everybody else, y'all come with these things, and it's all eighteen pages of what we'll do for you, and I just couldn't understand why in it somewhere, it couldn't say what you're gonna do for others in that ordinance, and had I not, Bud, and asked and asked, this wouldn't even be part of it, it would just be this.
I, I, I agree.
Okay.
I agree. Not, not, not as a result of any intention to hide it from anybody.
Can I say something? The reason is, the last time, one of the reasons where I see it for me, from our records, twenty years ago, somebody different was in there, and somebody different was up there. You know, the people that was here then, you know, Bud might remember some of it, but they're not here anymore, and then we're digging and trying to find this stuff, we can't even find it for our own city.
I understand.
That's one of the reasons we want stuff.
Debbie, I think, with Valt and Law, probably, I dug for weeks, because all I could find was an ordinance that said, we give you a franchise, I couldn't find anything, said, what you agreed to do for us, and when lo and behold, I found ones wore out, I don't even know now where I got from, every one of you all said, that's the first time you'd ever seen it. Debbie said, that, that's the first time I've seen that, and why.
Things are just buried in the paper.
Been like.
And the part, and with it was, back twenty-some years ago, I guess you all attached something to it that said basically, you could choose this poll tax rebate on street lighting, it had like three things on it, everybody said, well, I've never even seen that before, and it's all because all that's not attached with this stuff, and I just, and then again, when I went looking up and down the river, and I mean, would I not be prudent to say, well, I wonder what they're paying, Pansville, guess what, you can't find it, all you find is an ordinance that says they give you the right to do all this, and none of it says what you paid them. I guess I could go to Pansville City Hall and dig deep enough and find it.
Well, look how long it took time to locate your own city, look how long it took you to find.
Find it here, I mean, yeah.
See, that's the point.
But if it's gonna be attached to exhibit A, I'm cool with that, if Bud assured me that, had I not asked, it would be me.
The more I dig, the more things I find, there's all kinds of stuff in that office.
I understand your concern now.
Okay, all right.
We deal with some individual issues.
Thank you, Wendell, you've been good to work with, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And I am calling you right now.
Yeah.
We had Brenda come, yeah, she's been good to work with, because she's very good.
Yes, did we.
In a gallery way, I appreciate.
And we haven't got the Christmas light things sent in, because we really didn't know if we had the same things and all that kind of stuff, but I think we do.
No, couple of housekeeping sort of like things, tomorrow, can you email directly to Kathy, I don't get from the doghouse.
The, the ordinance with the correct number, which are in the state.
Yeah, those are.
Well, then I'll be sending it to you to get it okay, unless the problem, way to do it.
Let me send it to you with the.
No, send it to her, so I can stay out of the doghouse.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna try every email, Chris, but I'll get it.
The other thing, too, again, this is a housekeeping matter, I think you, maybe you talked to Kathy about reimbursing us with the cost of.
That was my other thing I wanted to say, because I'm really, I was the one that asked for that, and the mayor and I were talking about, if this is the process we have to go through for a franchise, then it's our cost. I thought we was publishing the same ordinance, but this is a different ordinance, so in actuality, is our cost right there, so I'm not asking AEP to pay.
I think it's.
That was a process I didn't understand until today.
I understand that.
I don't think it'd be very common for some outside company to pay.
Pay our bills.
That's what we thought about.
And so, that was the other thing I was gonna say, the first thing I was gonna say is it didn't matter to me.
Yeah, I, I agree, and he volunteered to do it.
Well, and I thought it was the same ordinance, we was just having to do it for AEP for some reason, and then I realized today, we understand, I understand that the ordinance was all actually different, and the process was something I didn't understand. The other thing was, it really didn't matter to me if we did this, you know, for the good of the city, I want what's done best for the city, but I want things to go for the record purpose across my desk properly, I apologize, but that's my purpose in that, is getting the information to the council properly.
It was the proper channel, I agree. That's all I got. I had no problem, if they had them attached to exhibit A, I was gonna recommend we don't pass it, but since it's in there, I think it'll be, future people can find it then.
Can I ask one thing?
Yeah.
Did Sherry type it up, or did his office type it? Okay, that's why it came from her office, okay. Normally, Sherry always does.
Normally, yes, ninety-nine percent of the time.
Yes, Sherry does my ordinances, that was different, too, so.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, it goes from my office to you.
Well, when he sends it to me, I'll be sending it to you to get the okay to.
Yeah, and then give it to the mayor, if I want to.
And so, are we going to the first three of y'all's that we're worried?
Y'all have, I just wanna change the numbers on it.
Yeah, just change that number.
Ordinance number?
Yeah. Two thousand and nineteen dash oh eight is what you'd be voting on, first reading of ordinance, basically establishing a franchise agreement between Kentucky Power and City of Louisiana, allowing them to place lines, poles, and equipment on our property, which is already there anyway. I do have another question about that, might be more of a balk question, but I can ask it. Brenda, my, I have several issues in town where there's a pole. The one you can see, if you wanted to see what I'm talking about, is right in front of my house, but they're all over town, where AEP decided to change the pole out for various reasons, most times because they're getting old, and underneath the power lines is phone lines, and so what we see in, in too many places, in my opinion, is, AEP puts in a new pole, and then they cut the top of the pole off of the old pole and leave the telephone lines on it, and now we got two poles. Now, both of your all's agreement says you'll do what's less obstru, what's most feasible or less destructive, less, you know, impact to the city, and I think two poles in every place than one is not less impact, and that's something, I don't know who I need to address it with, but it needs to be addressed. The over by our water plant, you remember, Brenda, we have a big stone, tore down, man, it tore down, I mean, and poles bent like this, wearing to the point now, come and put in new power poles and move the power, and the old poles are still there like this with the phone lines on, been six months. Now, I know it's phone lines, but it's your all's pole, I think.
I think the last one off is responsible, or at least, so in other words, the phone company is responsible for getting their lines off, once that's done, whether it's our pole or their pole, one or the other, I'll come remove it.
And take the old.
So, yeah, so we really can't do anything to remove.
But y'all put it there, right?
Well, I wouldn't know if it'd be pole by pole, whether we did.
Well, this one down here, you did, it's AEP.
But if the line is still there, the telephone company line, they need to get their facilities off before anything can be done to the pole.
So, if they take theirs off, then you're saying they have to remove the pole?
It's, it comes back and forth with that, if they own the pole, typically they remove the pole, if we own it, typically we do, and then sometimes it's the last one off, so we probably have to just know pole by pole, as to who.
And again, I'm not talking about more, I'm talking about dozens in this town that needs to be done. I'm talking about dozens in this town that needs to be done.
About all of them still have their phone line on?
Yes. Phone on okay. It's like you all move your power off, and what's even crazier, you cut the top of the pole off down to where the telephone line is. Now we got a half a pole and a pole. And I think all of yours, foothills, Light Home, your all's all safe. You can do whatever's less impact, less, you know, it's, it's, so if we start having two poles and every hole instead of one, it's not good at all.
If we can get a list of pole numbers?
Okay.
Or, you know, if you can get it down, I'll check, sit we on it, or kind of look into it further for you.
I can do that. And the pole that's in front of my house, just for record, they sent it December fourth of two thousand eighteen. And it's set there empty till December of two thousand nineteen. Then they moved the power off onto the new pole, and now I'm stuck with a half a pole with the, and it's been a year. And it's all over town. So, in reading through this this morning, that again, just jogged my memory. By your all's language, you, you act like, you know, again, you do what's least, uh, impact to the city, least impact to the streets, least, and still get the job done. And in all those cases, I don't think we need two poles to do it.
Yeah, we're typically the last on the pole, and then the first off. And then the last one off the pole, either they remove the pole or we do. It, it just depends on the circumstances, but...
But if, if...
But that's an agreement between them and the electric company, has nothing to really do with the city, only the franchise has to do with the city.
And the phone companies all pays you all beyond it.
There's a joint use agreement.
Yeah.
Who contacts them to take it, take their lines off the pole? They do or we?
Pardon me?
Well, I would, it should be AEP, no...
Are they contacted, so they know that...
My understanding is we contact them once we have our lines off.
Okay, that's what...
But what is the, do they have a certain amount of time, or?
I don't know.
It's just kind of in the air, nobody tells you.
What I should do next is get you a pole number list, send it to you, and you can check on it.
Yes.
Okay, I can do that. That's no problem. We're used to doing that, you know? That's what we do with straight lights out.